Okay, we have hit record. Meeting is being recorded and it's now seven o'clock, Madam President, it's all yours.
Thank you. We will call this meeting of the Ohio High Point Joint Vocational School District to order. Roll call please.
Rick Hart.
Here.
Buck.
Here.
Burrows.
Here.
Oh, yeah, I knew he was gonna be here, he said he was.
That was close.
That was drama.
Campbell. Dunham.
Here.
Dyer.
Here.
McConnell.
Here.
Mayo.
Here.
Mouser. Purcell.
Here.
Rings.
Here.
Savage.
Here.
Seti.
Here.
Staley.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
Ian Sundberg.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. We will move to item 3A, introduction of guests, Dr. Smith.
Yeah, we have PKO with us tonight, we have Robbie, a new ag teacher there outside. I think Mrs. Ramey wants to introduce her guests, so I'll let her go ahead and do that right now.
Oh, okay. I'd like to introduce Mark Butler, who's gonna be our new academic supervisor, and TJ Bales is gonna be our new student service supervisor. And I wanted to just take a minute and thank the board for approving this new administrative structure, working on new roles. It was vital that we had an academic and a student service with our special ed population pretty high. I wanted to take a minute and just what you see on paper is I'm more excited about, so I wanted to take a minute to just share that. TJ has been here and committed to Ohio High Point for 10 years. For the last three years, she's been filling in for administrative help. We recently had 36 seniors that we were worried would not cross that finish line. In her leadership and her taking her team and making sure they did, we had one withdrawal, but the other 35 will walk across stages. So I just wanted to commend her for that and her leadership and just how excited I am for her to join this team. And Mark was formerly a partner school principal with me, I respected his work from afar. And I just am so honored that he's chosen to come to Ohio High Point after 33 years in education to be with us and join this team. He has a heart for students, a heart for kids, and a heart for High Point. So I am thrilled that this new team is about to begin and so thankful to this board for approving this new structure. Thank you.
So some...
I can personally bow.
Somebody might need to in this meeting. But, you know, I heard from a couple of board members who enjoyed the work session and saw all of our different administrators that got to present that night. And you've seen Mrs. Bodie and Mrs. Koch also present at different times throughout the year. And a comment that got back to me was how strong this administrative team is. And I appreciate that, but it's just getting stronger. So we're really set up well for the future here, and so I appreciate Mrs. Ramey's kind words. If I missed out announcing anybody here, I'm sorry, but that's the guests that I know.
Okay, well, we'll move to item 3B, presentations, building update from in compliance with Sam Lewis.
So Sam is online tonight, and Sam, I will share your document here.
Perfect.
So it should be up on the screen, you also have it in your Google files if you're looking online. Paige, can you see it?
Yep.
Okay, Sam, I guess we're ready to go then, sir.
Great, and you can actually, Dr. Smith, move it down to the second page, just the key plan there on the top of the second play page. Perfect, thank you. So hello, everyone, happy to be back to present the May monthly update for the district's additions and renovations project. The pace of the project has definitely turned it up a notch. As we discussed in the last monthly update, Monarch has been focused on Area A, the addition, which is the hatch point, the hatch area there on the key plan, as where, as well as Area D, which contains the central plant area or really the guts of the building, the HVAC and electrical systems. They've also been working a little bit in Area C, mainly the outline portion there, the diesel lab addition, as far as previous work has went. As I've really tried to show in the pictures, Monarch has made some significant progress in Area A this month. They have completed the majority of the slab on grade work, which is the concrete slab on the ground and the CMU elevator shaft. They've also made significant progress for the structural steel erection, which is really a big deal, because Monarch was able to get out early, late winter, early spring, get their order for structural steel in, so it could actually be delivered in time to start being erected now. There's a limited availability of steel across the country, and it's really delaying some projects in Ohio and really across the country. So this is, it's a big deal that the steel was here and they're actually starting to erect it now, so that's really great. In Area C, Monarch has continued to work on the diesel lab addition. They've put the slab on grade down there, as well as worked on the perimeter CMU walls. They've also started working in earnest in the existing building portion of Area C. So they have worked on electrical plumbing, sanitary lines in there. They've also started some selective demolition of the CMU walls and shoring, so they can start putting in some additional doors in that area. They've also started the re-roofing work on the low roof portion of Area C. And also, as I'm sure the board is aware from their work session last week, there was an issue with the high roof area for Area C, which because of some withdrawal testing and some coring of the tech and samples, the district decided to go ahead, take off the buildup roof section, and replace the tech and roof decking there, which is going to curtail into a significant change order, unfortunately. But I really believe that it was the best, and really the best interest of the district to get this done and out of the way now. As far as Area D, Monarch continues to push forward in this area as well. There are really two sections in Area D, the central plant area one, where the majority of the HVAC systems were previously, oh, excuse me, that's the new portion, Area two is where the systems were previously. So in Area one, they start, they've continued to put in electrical lines, piping, and they've actually started setting some of the significant equipment, like the cooling tower was set in there, or, excuse me, the chiller. In Area C, they really focused on demoing some of the bigger equipment, disconnecting and removing that equipment, such as air handling units and the boilers there, as well as demoing the associated duct work and piping. So that's, that's really the construction summary of the last month. As far as the administrative side of things, Monarch has completed their baseline schedule and incorporated NV5 comments into that. And really, the importance of that baseline schedule really comes to light now because of this Area C roofing issue. NV5 and Monarch were able to sit down and really kind of look at different sequences of work that would allow for the least amount of delay because of that roofing issue, which has been great, they're still working through that. But the baseline schedule really allowed them to do that. To the contrary, some contractors like to do like a, well, our baseline schedule was really a cradle to grave schedule with all the details. Some contractors like to do a four to six week detailed schedule. If that was the case here, then it really wouldn't have been a whole lot of use, because really, the lead time for the tech and decking itself is six weeks. So our complete baseline schedule is really allowing them to look at all the different ways to reduce delay in that regard, which is great. Also, wanted to note that CTL, Construction Testing Company, and Logan County has been out testing or inspecting some of Monarch's work, which they really haven't found anything of concern, so that is great. And like we discussed last time, the submittal process is still running smoothly, which is allowing Monarch to procure equipment and materials faster. Thank you, Dr. Smith, for going ahead and moving down to the budget tracking tables. Really, everything, all the line items that we have there now are tracking well, tracking good at this point in the project. They're all green, which shows that there's still a substantial sum of money in each one of those pots. This has been updated per the expense ledger that Eric has provided, and then any invoices that I received over the past months. Can you go ahead, Dr. Smith, and move down to the contingency table? So all those are green, which are great. Move down just a little bit more. Yeah, that table at the bottom of the page there, perfect. So this table basically just tracks the owner's contingency. First portion of the table shows last month, or really the overall project contingency use. There were three new items that are in there for this month, one being an AV change, I think that was due to the air team units, a construction change directive due to the roofing, and then a construction change directive.
You're cutting out, Sam.
Can you hear me better now?
Sam, you start talking money, you're cutting out.
Can you hear me now, Rick?
I can hear you now.
Rick?
Yep.
Okay.
We can hear, I can hear you. You're telling us that we're spending money.
I did, I did, I did catch your joke. Appreciate it.
Now you're talking, I can hear you.
Um, and I just, I went all the way down through contingency items, did you hear that?
Yeah, we can't, we can't hear you, Sam, I'll summarize for you, okay? Those are change orders six and change order seven and change order CD, change directive number two. One was an underground existing line that was all closed off with smudge and slut stuff from the welding lab. Other one is involved in the change order of the roof, which you're already well aware. And then in the virtual technology, we talked about the air trains and those are being, different areas are added, but we're actually purchasing the air trains through these, that would have been about 10,000 more. And John decided he could purchase them himself and install them very quickly for about half the price of what that change order was going to be. If you remember, I kind of shared that with the board before somewhere in notes or something. So those are the current ones right now that we have. I, there was, there was another one for $1,500, just this week of hauling away some stuff. They dug up some things over in doing the retention area that was an old barracks that Robert knew was buried underground. And once you disturb that asphalt, asbestos, stuff like that, you have to just get rid of it properly. You can't re-bury it, as some thought we maybe could, so we didn't re-bury it somewhere on the property. We paid to get rid of it, that was not part, and so that'll be upcoming as well. Sam, I, can you talk again, do you?
Can you hear me now, now, Dr. Smith?
I can hear you now.
Hello?
I think.
Perfect.
I think these are the things you already talked about earlier on this page, I believe, was what was going, taking place in Area A, C, and D. It seemed like that was what your update was right there. And then the rest are pictures. If I summarize that right. So you guys have seen my update, which is a little bit different with the pictures and things of that nature. I will send some picture updates out this week. As, you know, right there, you see the steel and you see the framing going around just the elevator shaft, but now that's all stealed in. So all that steel way on the ground is now, a lot of it's up in the air. And so we will send some updated pictures this week. And then next month, I will make a new updated PowerPoint that I keep informing the staff and the board. So the roof work, starting on Area C, the material is laid up there, that's on the low bay side. And so you can see the high bay on the other thing, which is what we did the change order and everything on. So as he talked about, there's trench work, there's the new room that has all the new piping for the mechanical room. And we don't have Robert's picture of his new, brand new central plant centrifugal trailer, but Cal, can you tell you, he was real excited. He showed, he brought a picture of it and talked about how cool it was, and these were done, the ones in hospital, I think, at Children's General or something, or Children's National Hospital or something. So he's very excited about his new chiller that has been installed in place. So is there, is there any questions for Sam or I on this? Sorry, Sam, I just felt like you were cutting out too much. Any questions anybody has on the project so far? Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing. And we'll let Sam go, and I will move on to the rest of the...
Thank you, Sam.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you, can you, can you hear me now? I'm kind of frozen on the screen, I think.
We can hear you now, you're not talking about money anymore, so.
Well, thank you for doing my job, Dr. Smith.
Yeah, you'll see it in my bill.
Sounds good.
Talk to you later.
Thank you, bye.
Okay. Along with the district updates, then, students are all gone and we have made a plan to go full go next year. We won't be in a hybrid model any longer. We are working on a strategic plan, we have the consultants. If any of you want to be on the design team, it's gonna meet once a month, starting in August, all the way through May, to work on a strategic plan. And so I would say one or two board members, most can be a representative of that 50 group squad, from trying to get voices from all over our area and every county. And so I'll be reviewing that with this strategic planning consultant here next week. And so probably regardless, you'll end up getting just a survey, electronic survey as a board member this summer to fill out. And so for some of the groups, the focus groups, we'll start with the initial survey. And then that design team that makes week, monthly, will go over some of those survey results as they go through the whole process. So some of it will be just done in a survey form, I am sure the board will be included in that part. Brad and I are presenting to the Sloan Foundation on Friday for next year's funding. As we told you, it'll be, I think, the $262,000 that will be going, the 200 that they're giving us this year, the 62 that we banked to go into the building. Can't say enough great things about the Sloan Foundation and how they've worked well with us and our appreciation for how we're getting things right now in place for the new building. And then on Friday is the last day for staff, and we have set up a Google sheet for staff to use their hard hats and go on a tour. And so Robert is setting up to do three different tours with about 10 at a piece to take them around and before they leave, kind of see where their areas are, especially those who had to vacate the last month of May and things like that, what's been done so far. But anyone really on staff who is interested in kind of getting an update on the project, you know, we will be virtual the next two months as a board. But my expectation would be to plan on August to come back and maybe even do early or something like that for kind of a walkthrough at like 6:30 before the board meeting or something, on where the progress is taking place this summer, how close we are to being ready to fully open Area C. That's our biggest hangup right now, is whether that delay in roofing will delay putting students back in that area. We do have contingency plans and can, where we move people in May, hold off a little bit in that regard. But also, by not putting them there, we can't open another section up either until, sometimes till students all move and stuff of that nature as well. So it's a, it's a work in progress that will go on with great detail probably in tomorrow's meeting. But that is, it, you know, just once again, a compliment to the staff who heard in the work session. But those who weren't here, you know, not only did we get kids across the finish line, as you heard, and they passed, you know, the web exam scores on campus were up to 80%, which means, kind of since we were tracking that and, and taking out COVID data from last year, would show three straight years of growth on this campus. And so we're just really pleased with, with the staff and how hard they worked to make sure the essential things they get taught during this hybrid and COVID situation and how this team, this team, I'm telling you, built that schedule. It wasn't Rick Smith's schedule, it was them coming together, talking about the problems, building, building it. So Brad and Caleb and Tanya and, and all the supervisors who were part of that really deserve a lot of credit for understanding how many hours would be required for cause kids to make sure they got to go get their certificates, had to come an extra day, quite a few weeks, to make sure they had the hours on track to meet the state board, to do those type of things. So all that had to be coordinated with food services and busing from individual school districts and stuff like that. Had a couple of cause kids and which ones didn't. And so that took a lot of different effort and help this year. And so I just want to compliment my team for getting through this year and the staff and the teachers for doing just such a wonderful job. I think that's all my updates, Madam President.
Thank you. And on behalf of the Board of Education, we... terribly difficult here. And we were really tickled when we heard the 80%, that's wonderful. So I see we're getting them where we want them. So as part of item 3C, we have Caitlin Driscoll, Smart Technology Engineering II from Ben Logan, as a student of the month, and then Ethan Rangle, Exercise Science from Marysville High School. And then the staff member of the month would be Veronica Blair in Facilities and Grounds as the secretary there. Item four, committee reports and presentations, the legislative report, Paul?
On May 25th, the House introduced Bill 322 revised code regarding the teaching of certain events, certain concepts regarding grades and sets of public schools. House Bill 323 revised the section of the revised code to authorize the person income tax credit for certain primary and secondary education expenses. House Bill 327 was introduced, revised code to prohibit the school districts, community schools, STEM schools, and state agencies from teaching, advocating, and promoting diverse concepts. Went to committee on primary and secondary education, sent a bill 181, revised to regarding students' religious expression and interest, inter-scholastic athletics, and extracurricular activities. On May 19th, House Bill 312 to designate the, as November 23rd, as Women and Girls in STEM Day program, in STEM Day. House Bill 316, to nominate the 2021 High School Education Act, establish the supplemental year program for the 2021-22 school year, declare as emergency. House Bill 244, voted to pass 97-0, the bill would require K-12s, military students, the children who are relocating, but now you have residents of the district enrolled and participate in technology-based education opportunities. House Bill 110 was based operating corporations in fiscal 22 and 23 by the, I think, that was the seventh hearing. House Bill 73, which would reduce the number of end-of-course exams required for graduation from five to four by requiring new single American history and government exam beginning with the class of 2024. Require school districts to form a work group to evaluate the most, the amount of time students spend on testing and eliminate the requirement for 11th grade students to take the ACT SAT and prohibit student retention under the third grade reading guarantee. House Bill 105, which would require public schools to provide age-appropriate instructions to children sexual abuse and sexual violence, preventing and require in-service staff training in child's sexual abuse prevention. The amendment also requires parental notification, allows the parent to review the material. The committee accepted a substitute version of the House Bill 82, which would eliminate the requirements of 11th grade students to take the ACT SAT. The committee hailed sponsored testimony of House Bill 112, which would require one-time performance audits of school districts with a current academic distress commission. And then on legislative, there's a bunch more though, but it's pulled dry after that.
Thank you for that. So do you want to do the report on student achievement?
Well, a little access month on that, I've got business, I forgot about it, but I had, I talked to Triad earlier, talked to the guidance counselor, and said the Triad students are, interact with a program, are building the tables and stuff and chairs for, or benches for the fairgrounds right now. Triad actually had three students for become, fell victorious, they all had the exact same score. No difference, they went far out and they're all the same. Actually, one of the two were twins. And of course, blow the king's horn, they won the semifinal softball game tonight. They're going to the regional finals.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't have much more, but.
And Paul, I'm thinking that will be in every other month, maybe a report? Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay. No, the student achievement reports.
This, this summer.
I know.
There's gonna be a whole lot going on because.
Yeah, this summer, yeah, so we'll start back in September and go every other month or so.
Thank you, Paul. We need the report, the committee report with Alyssa Dunham and Eric on the PC card review. And we have some new members here tonight, so maybe you'd like to tell them what that is?
Well, we have.
I mean, you know, some of our new staff are on coming in.
We have a system of, well, they go up and smell and taste like credit cards, but our arrangement with the bank is known as a purchasing card. So we have, at the time Alyssa and I met to review, we had 43 active cards that are issued either directly to employees or to departments within the school. So the biggest challenge with, with having a single credit card, let alone 40 or 50 of them, is that if I were to pay a bill by check, I would make sure that I had a receipt that was dated, had an itemized list of what was purchased, how much each item cost, whether or not sales tax was charged, and who we bought it from. And only then would I cut a check. So when an employee has a purchasing card, they're effectively doing all that for me. So that's really no small feat to make that happen over and over and over again, which it does for us. This month, 33 of those 43 cards were active, so there were 33 different statements that the people on the outside of this room gathered all the receipts from their direct reports, reviewed it for all those things I just said, made sure that there was a purchase order prior to those. Or if there was any part of that process that fell short, it's up to them to go back to their employees and set that straight. It should all be taken care of before it hits my desk. So basically, they do all the work. I just review it at the end of the month and we pay, pay one bill. One big, one big.
One big check.
One big statement. But we use that really quite extensively. The spring would be a very, very big month for P-card usage because we typically travel a lot, which we didn't travel as we normally did this spring. But it, it would not be out of the ordinary to have a purchasing card statements of $250,000 plus for this. So we run about a million and a half, two million dollars of our expenses through the purchasing cards each year. So one of the things that we do, and this is required by higher advice code, is the board has to establish a review process if a district uses a credit card or, or something that looks, smells, and tastes like a credit card. So Alyssa has been appointed to that spot for three years and we meet twice a year. Basically, she picks a statement and we go through it front to back.
It's, it, you gave it a really good overview, so I'm gonna take the easy side here. It is, it's like looking at 43 credit card statements and you're literally going back through like you would at your house and going, making sure they were all yours and everything. And then, not only that, but you have all the paperwork that goes with it. So, you know, if you accidentally get your own sales tax, it's their responsibility to go back and get it, whether it's two cents, 30 cents, doesn't matter. And then, you know, he marks them to make sure that on the next month, that credit comes back through. So, I mean, every literal penny is accounted for back and forth. And like Eric said, if they didn't do a good job, they wouldn't be there. So they do a very good job with being off that final story there, because it's, I mean, it's a huge stack of papers to go through. So, yeah, of course, good job, there's a bunch of them, and yeah, it's always interesting to feel the paperwork that's involved with it, but it's numbers. It works for me.
Thank you for doing that on behalf of the board and then for the checks and balances.
Question? Do the auditors accept the P-cards? I mean, is that part of it?
They don't really have, they don't have much of a choice not to. And you know Jeff is a former auditor, what the auditors do. What, what the auditors will do is, it's really simple, they'll say, hey, what, what was your first check number of the year? They'll say, hey, what, what was your first check number of the year? What was your last check number of the year? And then they'll take a random sample of however many checks in between they need to satisfy their testing. So it would be unusual if one of their tests didn't land on a P-card. Now, if I were an auditor, that's right where I would go because most bang for your buck. I mean, you can review, if you wanted to, you could review three, four, 500 separate transactions in that one check if you really wanted for everything. But yes, trust me, if, if there were an issue with our P-card statement, you would be well aware of it. Because it's, it's just like a hot button, because I, I don't think many, many people do them very well, but we do.
Can we get a rebate on another?
We do. It's about a 1% of our spend. You know, maybe, maybe a couple thousand dollars a year.
Well, now you got them wanting to use it more behind me because they think you get a rebate, so.
Probably doesn't even begin to cover the time.
Yeah.
We really don't have much of a choice, because you know, if you're working at Graham High School, you're 50 minutes from my office. And so to think that you can actually trade paper back and forth and do it efficiently, it wouldn't work. So we have to have a better system. It has to be this. Now, the, the rub is, you know, those teachers have to be self-sufficient. I don't hold their hands, their supervisors don't hold their hands. There would just be too many hands to hold.
Not supposed to test this year anyway.
They have to, in, in order to buy what they need, when they need, they really need to buy in and, and do this system, not, not nine times out of 10 well, 10 times out of 10, every single time.
So scared you, Robbie? Yeah? 10 times?
Jerry will scare him.
How you doing, Caleb?
When I go through those, literally, if I a bunch of months say that there might be one little post-it note sticking out, maybe two. You know, there's really not that many. And some of them may be, you know, for the sales types or one of them wasn't, the receipt wasn't itemized enough, you know? So I mean, they have the receipt, it just didn't have what you specifically needed on it. So, I mean, something as miniscule as that, but when you look at the multitude of what's in there, if there's only one or two post-it notes.
Thank you both. Topics for discussion, item five. 5A, any call for the modifications to the agenda? It seems like Beth sent us an email late this afternoon.
If you saw the email, we added things to the agenda that you didn't see Friday because just simple things like yesterday superintendent meeting in the county, they decided to change the subrate to $105 for subs next year. So things like that are, are on it. I think you got that list in the email. I'm not gonna go through all of them. We'll ask for any questions as we go through other lists when we get there.
Okay, so, so for item 5B, the June regular board meeting will be on Zoom at 7:00 PM, and then July the same. And everybody will, we, we have Zoom.
Yep. Everybody should have Zoom on your iPads right now, or if you don't, Steve, we'll, we'll make sure that you have Zoom established with John. But as you can feel right now, it's a little muggy with nothing. I kind of want you to sense what the kids have been working with the last three weeks as well. But this will get worse when we turn off the water in the building and things like that. There will be restrooms and things at different times. And so we'll be going to Zoom as allowed by law for the last two board meetings fully. And then hopefully, like I said, meet back here in the August board meeting and even do a tour of what, how far we've come.
You'll have water at the administration building?
We'll have water out there, but we can't fit all of us out there, so we, we decided to go Zoom.
Okay. Item six, approval for the minutes. So a motion and a second to approve the minutes from last month's meeting. So we have Buck. Thank you. Are there comments or questions? If not, roll call please.
Buck?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dunham?
Yes.
Dyer?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Mayhew?
Yes.
Purcell?
Yes.
Reams?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Setti?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Zumberger?
Yes.
And Brookhart?
Yes.
Motion carries. We do have executive session, correct?
We do.
So a motion, item seven, a motion and a second to go into executive session to discuss the compensation of an employee.
Done.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Burrows?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dyer?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Mayhew?
Yes.
Purcell?
Yes.
Reams?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Setti?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Zumberger?
Yes.
Brookhart?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I don't know if you want to give.
Okay, we need to, we're gonna be back in session now.
Hold on, I'm gonna stop recording. I'm starting back the recording.
All right. We will be at item eight in the agenda. Action items for consideration is recommended by the treasurer. A motion and a second to bring the items to the floor for discussion and vote.
Who?
Campbell.
Buck.
Buck.
Campbell and who, Brookhart?
Brookhart.
You guys are getting me confused.
It's finally getting the picture.
Okay, Eric?
As I put in my notes, really, nothing of importance transpired in April other than what I shared that happened in the first couple of days of April related to the real estate tax settlements. So other than that, it was a fairly dry month. But I would be happy to answer any questions related to the financial statements that I did send out, if there were any.
One quick one. Before we put the levy on the ballot, you know, they, I believe the counties had kind of estimated what that would generate. Are we ahead of schedule or ahead of expectation?
I think it's spot on. It was, we were thinking about $1.8 million, and that's just pure real estate tax settlement money. And it's, it's right, 0.9 or so.
Good.
That's the PI fund. Anything else? Okay, on, on the agenda, if you go to item 8C, I've got three items listed there. We're not asking to increase the overall budget. We're just asking to shift some already budgeted monies around. If you turn to page four, item 8D, we are asking to make changes to the budget, a net reduction of $149,000 and change, and it's spread over multiple, multiple funds, most of which you'll probably pick up on are related to student activity accounts. This is just all part of my end-of-the-year house cleaning. I'd like to take a bit of it in May, and the balance in June, because it would be, June's already busy enough without this. If you're wondering what's going on, I kind of have the philosophy, when I work with the administrators, when they set their budgets for their CTSOs, we could do it in one of two ways. They could set the budget low, and then we could come back incrementally each month and increase those budgets, all these budgets at each board meeting. That's one way to do it. I prefer to tell them to go ahead and budget high. When we review, and I say we, it's more than me, it's the administrative team as well. When we review requisitions, we check for two things. We check budget balance and we check cash balance. And if it fails either of those tasks, the requisition then get approved. So Brad could set his budget for a CTO at $50,000, but if Brad only has $500, that's all Brad's going to spend. So that way, we bring the original appropriation to you in September. And then really, we only bring one change, and that's to dial the appropriations back down to what actual cash was at this time of year. And I would rather touch something twice than, you know, 100 and some times over the course of the year. So that's my philosophy on that. I'll probably, I generally let the FFA ones run a little bit longer because they're still pretty active at this point. But I'll bring a few of the CTSOs back and then the balance of my house cleaning in June. Item 8E would be the approval of a five-year forecast as it was presented last Wednesday. And if you have had a chance, item 8F is the summary pages of our FY20 audit. At the end of your board reports, I have copied off really what are the significant pages of the audit for you. What you need to know is, the way I see audits, there are three levels of concern. The first would be an item that the auditors have detected, and they feel it's of such a nature that not only do they have to inform the board, but they need to put it in the report itself to inform the public. Okay? So those would be report level issues. We have no report level issues with the FY20 audit. The next step down would be what they call their management letter. Again, that would be items that they feel are important enough to note that have come up during the audit, but not so important that they're going to include them in the public report, but they will write a letter to the Board of Education and say, these are items that we found during our audit. Okay? There are no management-level audit concerns with FY20 audit. And then finally, there are the verbal recommendations, and that would just be things that they pick up on and they come and say, hey, Eric, you know, this is something we've noticed. We're just gonna make note that we have verbally talked to you about this issue. And there were three of those. So the idea being that if you address things at the verbal level, you never grow to the management level. And if you address things at the management level, they never grow to the report level. So we try to keep, try to keep everything addressed the first time they bring it to our attention so that they don't grow to be bigger issues. The pages of the actual audit opinion that I, I copied for you, I always, I kind of giggle when they do this, is absolutely not sexy. There are no fireworks, you know, no parade. Basically, the best audit opinion you can get is just one where they say, we randomly test things. Everything we tested was okay, but you need to realize we don't test everything. So there's an opportunity that there might be something out there that we didn't pick out. But what we did test is okay. And, and that's called an unqualified opinion, okay? And that's as good as it gets in the auditing world. And we received an unqualified opinion both on the financial respects of our FY20 audit and on the internal control. And internal controls, well, that's actually a lot of the stuff we were talking about earlier. You know, what systems do we have in place to make sure that we do follow our own procedures and Ohio Advice Code? So I would expect probably in June that the Auditor of State would include Ohio High Point on their Auditor of State award list. So if that happens, I'll make sure. The most important thing to know about that is that that is very much a district award. As I tell you a lot, and it's true, by the time work gets to me, it's either been done well or it's not been done well. Okay? So it's not so much that I've done things well. It's that the district has done things well. So we are fortunate enough to receive that award again. I will let you know, but please see it as a district award and not an individual.
And then when you said as board president, I get everything that he's talking about via email, and we have choices along the way. Everything's okay, they tell me it is, and if it's not, I would know otherwise also. So there is a checks and balances in that. He's just not making that up.
The final item would be item 8G. That, this really falls in my section because I think the recommendation to go out for bids was in my section earlier, in an earlier board meeting. But we had the bid opening for the repaving of the student parking lot last week. We had three bidders. All three were well below the, the estimate of, the estimate was $263,000. The, the winning bid was Wagner Paving out of Aurora, Ohio at $118,685. So we would recommend that you accept that bid and get that project scheduled underway this summer, I believe.
They're gonna do that during construction? There's no chance of any of them paving and then all of a sudden?
That is correct. They're actually going to do it after the fire loop is established and the fire extinguishers are put in, or fire hydrants are put in, in the places that they're supposed to. So they'll be digging to the middle of the student parking lot, getting that done. And then this will come over and repay that and do all that part, so it's good and clean.
I didn't want to do like the state where you repaved it and then we could throw it over there.
No, we've already coordinated, already coordinated that with the, with everybody.
This, this was actually scheduled to be done about two years ago. We pushed it off for no reason. We said we, Robert pushed it off.
Why did the bid so dramatically fall?
Well, you know what? The, the architect was talking about that. And the bids range, I've got him here.
118 to 149, I think.
I told John that Barker must have given us the estimate.
Well, 118 to 148. And, you know, the architect just kind of scratched his head and he said, you know, 95% of this job is asphalt. You know, I don't know why the variance from the estimate to this, nor why the wide variances between the bids themselves.
We can get asphalt, not steel, right?
Well, we can get asphalt last Wednesday.
I'm kind of surprised. Large petroleum basin, that stuff's going up, so.
Once again, they, they emailed Wagner and they didn't pull their bid. They verified that their bid was good. Wagner has been used with the architects on some other projects and verified that with Robert did some checking and verified they were a reparable paving place. And so, and we're having another section paid up on the hill and more for that, and it's a different company. So there's no, you know, two different people. One, those projects, wasn't one got it all. So I think everything has been checked and balances through this process.
That's it for me unless you have questions.
Anything else for Eric? Roll call please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dunham?
Yes.
Dyer?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Mayhew?
Yes.
Purcell?
Yes.
Reams?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Setti?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Zumberger?
Yes.
Brookhart?
Yes.
Buck?
Here? Yes.
And Burrows?
Yes.
Motion carries. Glad you're here. Item nine, actions for consideration as recommended by the superintendent. A motion and a second to bring items 9A through 9O to the floor for discussion and vote.
Let me queue.
There's a little tail.
Ooh, now there is. Sorry.
Mayhew?
Buck?
Thank you. Dr. Smith?
9A was one of those changes. I think Walgreen was added in the email to our internship agreements. 9B, I appreciate the work of all those who have worked for our district or who are changing in positions here. They've done a great job. I think most of the rest there as far as contracts are standard, and there's nothing really different to report. Robbie Thiel is here as the ag teacher, as we talked about earlier, and 9E, as well as all the other one-year, two-year, three-year contracts and continuing contracts there. At the bottom of that on page eight, extended days then follow based on what your position is and whether you work for Marysville or whether you work in ag or different types of things. You have extended days. Those are part of the standard part of their contract, as well as supplementals and not. are at the same price point for them. Is there any questions in my section?
I don't have any.
Okay. That's all I have, ma'am president.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Dunham? Dyer?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Mayhew?
Yes.
Purcell?
Yes.
Reams?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Setti?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Zumberger?
Yes.
Brookhart?
Yes.
Buck?
Here? Yes.
Motion carries. Glad you're here. Item nine, actions for consideration as recommended by the superintendent, a motion and a second to bring items nine A through nine O to the floor for discussion and vote.
There's a little tail there.
Ooh, yeah, there is. Sorry.
Buck?
Thank you. Dr. Smith?
Nine A was one of those changes, I think Walgreen was added in the email to our internship agreements. Nine B, I appreciate the work of all those who have worked for our district or who are changing impositions here, they've done a great job. I think most of the rest there, as far as contracts are standard, and there's nothing really different to report. Robbie Steele is here as the ag teacher, as we talked about earlier, and nine E, as well as all the other one-year, two-year, three-year contracts and continuing contracts there, at the bottom of that on page eight. Extended days then follow, based on what your position is, and whether you work for Marysville, or whether you work in ag or different types of things, you have extended days, those are part of the standard part of their contract, as well as supplementals. And nine G is just what we do this time of year to get ready to sign contracts to move into next year. No real changes. Connor, and it's been doing a real good job, and so I think we bumped him up, was that about a dollar, Eric? I think, yeah, an hour for a tech person is a great deal, and he's really come on well his very first year. You see in nine L all the staff recognition that I'll be giving out on Friday at our awards banquet, as well as nine M is our standard kind of Blizzard, what you knew as Blizzard bags, that will probably be more of online in a blended learning format, as we apply for that, probably bring that to you next month, as I fill out the paper for blended learning again. If you remember last year, we did blended learning, and they removed it, we did remote learning, well, remote learning's not yet coming back, so we're going to probably go ahead and fill the blended learning out, in hopes that we can use some of that for things like Blizzard bags and those policies. Nine N are the policies the policy committee went through. The answers to your questions were, I don't know if we sent those back out, I think in the board notes, I think Beth put those out for you, but basically, she fixed the counter thing. The idea about the rate definition was just a mistake by Niola, it was the exact same word already in our policy, they don't know why they X that out, but I think I answered those questions through Beth and there, and so all these policies are being recommended by the policy committee as presented. And then, I believe that I see nothing else. I talked to you about Q, about raising the pay for subs in the county, all the districts are at the same price point for them. Is there any questions in my section?
I don't have any.
Okay. That's all I have, ma'am president.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Dunham? Dyer?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Mayhew?
Yes.
Purcell?
Yes.
Reams?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Setti?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Zumberger?
Yes.
Brookhart?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.